Good to go.
All set? Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 2021 meeting of the Board of Appeals. So we obviously are in a Zoom format, so if anybody has any questions as we go through of how to handle that, please let us know. Generally, if you're someone who's going to be presenting one of the applications, as we're ready for you, we'll call and our technical wizards will get you up to the front of the screen and you would go ahead and make your presentation. If you want to stay on the call, you can do so when you're finished with your presentation and listen to the deliberations. We have seven applications tonight, and when we finish those, we'll go into the deliberations. So you're welcome to stay on the call and listen or whatever you wish. If not, then you can call Rick DiStefano in the building office tomorrow, and he can let you know the result of your application. Okay, so Rick, we'll call this meeting to order. Can you call the roll, please?
Just before we do that, Mr. Chairman, let me just tell the audience that if anybody is out there looking for 4-807-21 or 4-808-21, those are for the Country Club of Rochester tennis courts. Both those applications have been withdrawn, so you do not need to stick around. Mr. Primo.
Here.
Ms. Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yeah.
Ms. Dale.
Here.
Mr. Mites.
Here.
Ms. Watson.
Here.
Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
Please let the record show all members are present.
We don't. So we do have some minutes, yes?
Dennis, just before we get into that, just for the record, just for the record, the meeting was advertised in the Brighton.
Oh, yes. Very good.
Go ahead. It was advertised in Brighton Pittsburgh Post of April 1st, 2021.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, so there are minutes from the February meeting?
In January.
In January.
January and February.
January and February. Okay, I guess we'll do January 1st. Okay, so are there any comments on the January minutes? Go ahead, Judy. Thank you.
Okay, on page seven, line 11, the word should be pages or paragraphs. I'm not quite sure. It says one or two more pages or paragraphs. There's a floor plan, probably pages. Anybody else see that? Well, nobody. It's not passengers. I know that.
Probably pages.
Pages. Okay, thank you. All right, on page 11, line 17, the word in the middle should be range, R-A-N-G-E, and in line 19, it should be A-C. On page 14, line 18, in the middle, it should be he. On page here. 30, line nine, delete no into there and replace it with go in there too. Page 54, line one, the first word should be that. Page 56, line 12, it should be two stories, S-T-O-R-I-E-S. Page 65, line one, the second last word is put. Page a few more. 82, line two, sort of towards the end, it should be you instead of any. On page 94, line one, sort of in the middle, it should be won't instead of didn't, and I think this is the last one that I have. Page 121, line two, the first word is spaces, and that's all I have.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other additions or corrections to the January minutes? Okay, then I could entertain a motion for those minutes.
Move approval of the minutes as made by Judy.
Okay, second. Andrea, okay.
The motion is to approve with corrections, Mr. Primo.
I.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right? Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Dale.
Yeah.
Mr. Mike.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Rick, there's some sort of feedback.
Yeah, I'm not sure where it's coming from.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems to be on your end, Rick, where when you're speaking, it's kind of doubling it.
It was just doing Judy's, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now it sounds all right.
Yeah.
All right, the motion to approve with corrections carries.
Okay, so now we have the February ones. February minutes, Judy?
Yeah, there are just two. On page 28, the first word that was in audible should be banking, B-A-N-K-I-N-G. And then on page 31, middle of the sentence, the word is relates, R-E-L-A-T-E-S, and that's all I have.
Okay, very good. Does anyone else have any other things for the minutes? Okay, how about a motion for the February minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Then we have a second?
I'll second.
Andrea, okay.
Motion is to approve with conditions, Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
She's muted.
Yeah.
Ms. Dale.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Rick, whenever you're ready, you can read the first application. The hold's over for March.
Application 4-803-21, application of Kenneth Bracker, architect, and Kevin and Rachel Glazer, owners of property located at 129 Ambassador Drive. For one, an area variance in section 205-2 to allow building addition to extend 4.5 feet into the 30-foot side setback required by code. And two, an area variance in section 209-10 to allow livable floor area after construction of said addition to increase from 7,280 square feet to 7,552 square feet, where a maximum of 5,566 square feet is allowed by code. I'll spread an application and plans on file.
Okay, who do we have speaking for 129 Ambassador?
Ken Bracker. Ken, are you there?
He is. I'm just.
He was there, so.
He was there, yes. Ken?
I'm muted. All right. You said what? You're mute. Oh. Okay, whoops. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and I'm very happy.
Okay, Ken, whenever you're ready, you can proceed, okay?
I am ready. Okay. Um, I'm looking for one little piece of paper here, and I'll find it here in one second. Maybe one other little thing here with my computer. Oh, that didn't do any good. I went through, and maybe Rick gave it to you guys.
Ken, you're gonna have to get closer to the microphone.
Okay, thank you very much. I haven't done a lot of these, and I'm gonna be going a little bit here from memory because I can't find one of my... Oh, yes, I found it. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, the sound is better. Yes, thank you.
Okay, I went through, and I did a little bit of an analysis of this property in reference to the size of the living area as compared to the Town of Brighton zoning code. I don't know if Rick was able to give to you today the property analysis that I did. Rick, were they able to get it?
I didn't receive anything, Ken.
Okay, then I'll just read it off then. I went back through, and I went to the real property portal of Monroe County. I looked at 129 Ambassador Drive, the property that's in question right now. That property is listed as 1.17 acres, lot size of 50,965.2 square feet, and the living area of 7,101 square feet. If you do the mathematics, that works out to be 7,100, 7.177 square feet of site per living space. I looked at other parcels like 245 Ambassador Drive. That house is bigger than this house. That house is 7,938 square feet. If you then do the ratio of site to living area, it's got 6.53 square feet of living area of site area per living area. And that also, again, I looked at 292. 292 is 7,615 square feet. 80 Ambassador is 8,942 square feet. 140 Sandringham is 8,537 square feet. 250 Espinade is 8,182 square feet. When you look at those homes, some of these have, well, I then went through on... Let me jump here for a second. I then looked at the Town of Brighton code as if this was a new house. Well, first, let me state here that certainly this house is a large house, but it's in keeping with many of the homes within the neighborhood. That area is blessed with nice, big, beautiful homes. If you happen to ever take a look at the Town of Brighton code for a new house, if you run the math on the Town of Brighton where they do the 1,200 square foot lot size, the living area of 2,502 square feet, it works out to be that you get 4.6 or so square feet of site for every square foot of living space. And then if you do it for an addition, again, using the mathematics of the town code, you get 3,803.89 square feet of site for every square foot of living space. You can, from the property, from the real property portal from Monroe County, it's easy to see that 129 Ambassador has, oh, I would say maybe almost twice as much site per square foot of living space as if you were gonna put an addition, if you would be allowed if you put it, an addition onto the house per the traditional, per the way the Town of Brighton code is written. And when I spoke about the Ambassador, the size of the Ambassador house as listed in the real property portal of Monroe County, the actual house is slightly bigger, I believe, based around field measurements, and the actual property is slightly smaller. And I, why the difference is probably a percent or two on both of them, but either way, if you, the green, the square foot of site to living in the 129 Ambassador is substantially higher than what would be allowed by the code if you just did the straight mathematics of the of your code and of your single-family zoning for code compliance analysis.
Ken, I have to kind of interrupt you here. If that were the case, then you wouldn't be in here for a zoning variant.
No, no, I am not saying we are not in, I am not saying that we are, that we don't need a variance based around the code. What I am saying is that when the code was, and this is my interpretation of it, the code didn't want to have too much house on a lot, and there must have been a rationale when the Town of Brighton wrote the code, and they said that, guess what, if you build a new house and you've got a 1,200 square foot lot, you can only have, you know, it works out to be that you end up with 4.62 square feet.
Can we have no lot? We have no lots that are 1,200 square feet in a town.
12,000 square feet. I misspoke. That was me. I'm sorry, I misspoke. 12,000 square feet. So that's what, it's not based around the code, based around the zoning code, we are, the amount of square footage of this house is not excessive for the size of the lot, and it's also not a lot, and it's also not out of keeping with other homes within the neighborhood. So I think that we are not doing anything to be detrimental to the neighborhood at all by having this addition. It's in keeping with others, and I fully believe its intent, it's within the intent of the single-family zoning code for compliance. And when we come to the side setback issue, we are asking for 25 feet, which is a very large buffer compared to many of the homes in Brighton. So I don't think anything that we're proposing is excessive. I think everything we're doing is in compliance with the neighborhood, and hopefully I've explained this well enough that you don't have any questions, but if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. I actually do have a number of questions. I'm wondering if you could just start. I'm just wondering if you could start with the reason for the addition, and can you explain what the, what the need is, whether all their alternatives were considered that didn't require a variance, and if a smaller addition would achieve the project goals, or why not?
I should have stated that before, and I'm sorry, I did now. Ultimately, I always describe it, when homes are built, they're built at a particular period of time. Lifestyles change. Even though, and what they want in this house, which is to have a large enough kitchen such that it'll serve as a point of entertainment when they have guests over. So even, so the purpose of this is to allow that simply to be achieved, that they want a large kitchen, and that's what we're shooting for here.
Let me explain a little better. The house is.
Hold on, sir. Can you just please give us name and addresses for the record?
My name is Kevin Glazer. I'm the owner of the home.
Yeah.
129 Ambassador Drive.
Okay, please go ahead.
The house was built in 1928, and this is the original kitchen, and it was originally designed as for staff, the staff quarters. It's a narrow galley kitchen, and while the home is beautiful, the kitchen is is not designed to go with the rest of the house in a modern way, and we were hoping to widen the kitchen to make it appropriate for today's living standards. Unfortunately, we've looked at other ways to modify the kitchen so we wouldn't have to get a variance, but if we push into the house, it affects the original dining room. It affects the original flow of the house, and I don't know if anyone's had a chance to drive by the house, but I spent past decades meticulously restoring this house to its original beauty, and I've been very sensitive to its original design.
Thank you. Can I ask two more questions?
Sure, go ahead, Jen.
I'm wondering if there's any impact or change on landscaping or the driveway with this project?
The driveway won't change at all. The landscaping, where obviously some, there have to be, there will be some changes.
Okay, and the second question then was just be whether or not you have spoken with any neighbors, and have you received any, any feedback?
So I've talked into all my neighbors, especially the ones who are who's right next to me, people where the, this, this addition would affect them, and they have no problem with it.
Okay. You have anything else, Jen?
No, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else on the board have any other questions for either of these gentlemen? Okay, well, at this point, then we will ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak related to the audience. I'll be okay. On the call related to this application?
I just want to make one comment. You mentioned about the landscaping. It really doesn't affect landscaping. It's an area of the house where we have our air conditioning units, and is very little landscaping there. The majority of landscaping is to the south of the house, which you can see, which I have extensive gardens.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then, there being no one else that would like to speak regarding this application, the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Application 4-801-21, application of the Country Club of Rochester, owner of property located at 2935 East Avenue for extension of approved variance, allowing for reduced building setbacks. I'll spread an application and plans on file.
All right, and who do we have speaking for CCR?
Hi, this is Andrew Spencer with BME Associates. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Spencer, we can hear you.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you very much. Yes, we are looking for an extension of a variance that was granted last year in March for a building setback from 150 feet to 42 feet, as the plan that has been shown on the screen depicts. There have been no changes to the plan. The reason for the request of the extension is primarily due to the COVID pandemic. When we received this variance in March of last year, it was right at the onset of shutting down and shutting down construction, and the Country Club of Rochester had decided to hold off on doing any construction on the site until such time as number one, construction was allowed to begin again, as well as making sure that this COVID-19 pandemic did not alter other elements within their, within their site. Really is a very, very short and sweet explanation. Again, we are not looking for any deviation for the variance that was obtained last year in March of 2020.
Okay, very good. Is there any other questions for Mr. Spencer? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone on the Zoom conference that would like to speak regarding the extension of this variance? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Annie.
Application 4-802-21, application of James and Karen Coffey, owners of property located at 36, 36 Midland Avenue for an area variance in section 205-2 to allow sites setback to be 4.5 feet. Remove the minimum 30 feet required by code, all for the purpose of re-subdivision approval. I'll spread an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this application?
I'm Jim Coffey, James Coffey, and my wife Karen is downstairs if she needs to be here.
Okay, and just for the record, your address?
36 Midland Avenue, Route 14620.
Very good. When you're ready, please proceed.
Okay, my wife and I have been in this house since 1984. We both recently resigned and have decided to stay in the house through our days, and that means we're gonna have to have a first floor bedroom, which means in addition. And my house was built in 1929, 1926, and the house is tucked right into the corner, literally, maybe four feet on the side and maybe five feet behind, if that. So in order to put this addition on, we have to convert from septic to grinder. Anyways, we need to, on that addition, we need to combine the lots, otherwise we'll encroach. We own three lots adjacent to our home there, and we're trying to combine all of those lots into one tax number. Now, I did this with the town for those two lots that you see there where it says driveway, because on that one lot was my house, and on the next lot was my septic system. This is, you know, back in 80, 84, and the town asked me to combine them into one tax number because I was building a deck, which was going to encroach on the lot that had my septic system. So anyways, it's kind of the same idea here where we're hoping to combine all the lots into one tax number, and that way avoid any kind of conflict with putting piping and putting the addition on the house.
Okay.
I think I included a picture, and you can see how far back my house sits, because it's the, it's the law that you gotta be, what, what's the percentage? I forget, from the width of your property, have the house be away from the property line? Anyways, I'm way over.
Yeah, it's 15%. So just a little help for the board members. When you have a subdivision like this, we've seen it a few times before in the past, we have to take a lot width of the new lot. So the new lot width is gonna be the 80 of the existing house lot, and then the three 40-foot lots all join together, creating that 15% or 30 feet. Obviously, the house is staying exactly where it was, but because there is a required new, greater setback, that is why Mr. Coffey is in in front of us requesting the variance.
Thank you, Rick. That's what I meant.
Hey, Rick, this is Ken Gordon. Just a question for you, or perhaps Mr. Coffey. Has the resub been done? Have those lots been combined already?
No, they, they can't be combined until we approve the variance, and then we can't physically, the town can't sign the plan until it complies with code or variances are granted.
So that would be, I mean, the continuation of that application, so that that application would not be withdrawn is something that we would be interested in seeing, right?
The, the actual subdivision application?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that would be an administrative review, Ken.
Okay. But we, I guess my point, my point's simple. I didn't know whether this, the resub had been done or not, but my point simply is, is that if the board were to grant this variance, I would think that we would want that to be granted with the understanding and condition that, that
Yes.
resub is continued, not withdrawn.
Yeah, we would cover that, Ken, in the, in the conditions. You're absolutely right. Okay, Mr. Coffey, did you have more? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No. Oh, no, no, that's pretty much it.
Okay, all right. So do any of the board members have any questions for Mr. Coffey?
This is Ed Primo. He actually, Mr. Coffey, thank you in your comments. You, you covered what would have been most of my questions. I guess it's both the question, perhaps for Mr. Coffey and for Rick. When, when he goes forward for the addition itself, that'll be subject to other reviews by the Town Building Department?
Yeah, correct, correct.
Okay.
Architecture Review Board, building permits, et cetera.
So the actual addition is not part of this application at this point?
Right. The addition is going to come, you know, to the south, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact any setbacks, provided that it didn't go closer to the rear of that newly created lot.
And to looking at this situation, I guess this could be both to Mr. Coffey and to Rick. I mean, it struck me, the only thing you could do is to create a side yard of 30 feet was actually to tear down most of the house, which doesn't make any sense.
Correct.
Correct.
And it really is all for the purposes of the re-subdivision approval.
Right.
Could I comment? Yeah, sure, Mr. Coffey.
I just want to say that these lots have been here, you know, ever since we I just want to say that these lots have been here, you know, ever since we've been here, and so to do this doesn't change anything on my street or in my, you know, in the neighborhood at all, it looks the same and function the same, as far as my neighbors go.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, and anyone else questions for Mr. Coffey? Okay, there being none, then, uh, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Application for A O three twenty-one, application of John Gear, owner of property located at twenty-one seventy-one West Henry Road, dramatic, for modification of the conditions of approval, requesting a sixty-two point eight square foot building face sign and move the maximum twelve point five square foot building, building face sign as condition, also got an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this application?
Hi, this is John Gear.
Jen, just give us your address, please, for the record.
Twenty-one seventy-one West Henry Road.
Okay, very good, all right, so when you're ready, please proceed.
Uh, so I'm looking to, uh, put this sign up, uh, it's a little bit larger than what we're approved for. Uh, it makes it more scale to the building. Looks very presentable and people will basically know who we are. Thank you.
Okay, is there questions for Mr. Gear?
Yes, Judy. I noticed that you also have the sign in the peak, oh, at the entryway, are you going to remove that or do you want that one as well?
Uh, we'd like to, uh, put one in its place, the same size, just a little cleaner and nicer numbers for the address.
Rick, that, that would be an issue, yes?
Yeah, I think that's gonna be an issue in a number of ways. Um, one is that the original approval was for a building face sign, not two building face signs. And also, I think, um, you've got really close, although this is a, it's under a use variance, but if you go by our standard sign size approvals, the total of both those signs would be over what we would permit by code.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, we'll, we'll get rid of that one.
Yeah, I think, John, I think it'll be a lot cleaner if you, uh, get rid of the one that's in the peak.
Okay, yeah, not a problem. So we can put some house numbers there?
Yeah, oh yeah, you can put your address numbers in there, absolutely.
Rick, what is the maximum square footage of a building sign, um, that would be permitted?
Eighty-two point five square feet, so that's a little calculation I did up there, the building width is fifty-five feet. And you get, um, it's basically times one point five giving you eighty-two point five square feet of allowable signage. Again, if this was in a commercial district, that's what we would permit for a sign.
Right, right.
And it's a little smaller than that.
Right.
The actual size of the sign.
Okay. All right, is there any other board members that would like to question Mr. Gear on his motivation here? That's it? All right, then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this sign application change? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application for A O four twenty-one, application of Christopher and Rebecca Hayes, owners of property located at forty-one Midland Avenue for an area variance in section two oh three dash two point one B seven, allow an air conditioning unit be located in the front yard, move the side or rear yard as required by code, also sky and application plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this application?
Hi, Rebecca Hayes, um, owner of the property at forty-one Midland Avenue.
Okay, great, Rebecca, when you're ready, please proceed.
Okay, I think the, the summary pretty much covered it. Um, at first, I'd like to say, uh, we're the neighbors of Jim Coffey and I tried to unmute myself to, say with his application, we support whatever they'd like to do, but I wasn't able to unmute myself at the time.
Okay.
Moving on to ours, um, I, I think it's pretty, pretty simple, just where the house is located on the lot, we don't have a rear yard and we only have the side yard on one side, but, there's a deck there that's wide enough that we can't put an air conditioner on the other side of it, that's too far from the house to make the connection into the basement, so really the only place that we have to put it is this front corner in that sort of alcove that's created where the front of the house sticks out. That is also the same area that we keep our trash and recycling bins, you know, it's not, it's not visible from the street really at all, um, because the house is set so far back. Uh, we've been assured by our contractor that the unit, um, doesn't go above the noise limit and also that there is a bit of an overhang on the front of the house there, but he says it's well tall enough that we won't get any noise echoing or bouncing around off there. So I really don't think that it should affect anything about the, the neighborhood and there are only, on this plan that you can see on the screen, lot sixty-nine is, um, a forever wild area, so there's nobody on that side. Uh, we've spoken to the neighbors on lot sixty-six, um, Michelle and Patrick Nicholson, and they have no problems and the only other neighbors who'd be able to see it are Jim and Karen Coffey across the street who also support our plan.
Okay, very good. All right. Any questions for Rebecca? Pretty straightforward.
We think so, thanks.
Okay, thank you for your, your presentation, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application for A O five twenty-one, application of Jeffrey Gardner, owner of property located at forty-five Null Top Drive for an area variance in section two oh five dash two, allow two-story addition to extend six plus or minus feet into the existing thirty-nine point eight foot front setback or forty foot front setback as required by code, also got an application plans on file.
Good evening, my name's Jeff Gardner, I'm the property owner at forty-five Null Top Drive and also the preparer of these documents.
Go right ahead.
Okay, um, so just, um, just a little background, my wife and I, we moved in and purchased a house about four years ago now and, uh, as part of all this, we've been looking around at whether or not to move, you know, with COVID or to expand our house, we need a little bit more room. And we came up with the idea of actually taking down the existing garage and family room and rebuilding it to a two-story addition with a master suite upstairs. As part of that layout, obviously the side setback is something we needed to watch out for, so we've got that highlighted there. But the other challenge we have in our current house is that the doorway from our existing kitchen to the back family room, which is at the rear corner of that footprint, um, really constrains where the garage can be and I think on my other prints it shows it a little bit better, the full-size plan. But basically what happened when we ended up starting to lay this footprint out, you can see on the left-hand picture there, towards the back corner, yep, right there, I'm sorry, I'm not driving. The existing doorway basically with the utilities is what's kind of controlling how far we can get, that twenty-foot single car garage. And so that really led us to have to bump out towards the front and impose on that front yard setback of forty feet. Um, so I think, I think I was able to let, limit the design down to about four feet. We did, we did put for an awning on the front or some sort of an architectural feature to kind of break up the face of the building, that's why it's at six. And, and that's basically it. I've, uh, I think I submitted today a, a little, uh, letter I took around to my neighbors. I got my neighbor immediately adjoining me who's on the side of, uh, this bump out to, you know, agree with no objections, he reviewed the plans, and I've also got, uh, a few other neighbors around the, around my property to review and accept them. So that's, that's it.
Okay. All right, go right ahead.
This is member, right, just two quick questions, one, I, your application, um, mentioned, is it a drainage swale backyard to that, um, restricts how far you can kind of go into the rear yard as well?
Yeah, that, that too, I mean, Null Top is named Null Top because everybody's backyard is basically a swell, it goes down. So the more, the more we push out towards the back, the more getting into drainage and graded, grading issues there. And then basically, you know, it's really kind of confined looking at where that doorway is. I tried playing around with some options, trying to, but going out through the corner of a house, obviously, there's a lot, you know, in terms of load bearing and everything like that, and utilities would be a lot of rework in the kitchen to make that doorway happen some other way.
And then one other question, just so that it's, um, part of the record, Null Top Road doesn't seem to have very consistent front yard setbacks on the existing homes, is that accurate? Um, meaning it's not as if every home is exactly the, the full length of the setback required by code?
Um, I don't know if I can attest to that, I know my neighbor across the street, when you look at his immediate one out the window right here, the garage does come in front of his house, you know, a few feet, so I don't know if I could consistently say that. My, my, part of my zoning assessment was that the fact that this side and old top drive is zoned, um, RLC, while the other side is RLB, and when you go into the rest of the neighborhood that's RLC, you know, you start seeing a lot smaller lots and that was kind of, you know, a single car garage is a single car garage, right? I can't restructure the shape to make it, you know, the cars gotta fit, it's a rectangle, so.
Okay. Very good. All right, is there any other questions by the board members? Okay, then being none, then, is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to talk related to this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application for A O five twenty-one, I'm sorry, that was real five twenty-one. Application of A O six twenty-one, application of Jack Seagrest, architect and Jacob and Rachel Home, owners of property located at twenty-two Westland Avenue for an area variance in section two oh five dash two, allow building addition to extend two point four feet in an existing thirty point four foot rear setback or forty foot rear setback as required by code, also have an application and plans on file.
Okay, who do we have speaking for five, four A O six?
Uh, Jack Seagrest, I'm the architect for the project.
Where are you hiding, Jack, where are you?
I don't know, here, here we go. What's that?
Perfect.
Um, we are here looking for a rear setback variance. Um, we have, uh, an addition that we're putting on the back of the house, um, that has basically, it's a kitchen addition and it's a mud, a mudroom, this house was built in the thirties. Um, and it, there is no mudroom facilities at all. Um, the only place we could really put it was on the, I'll call it the east side of the house, which is a little cross-tatched area. We have a forty-foot setback, I think the existing garage is at thirty feet and we're gonna be looking at probably around that for a setback as well. Um, and we're hoping to, uh, to, uh, get the variance. You can see, you can't see the addition from the, from edge mirror because it's behind that house at the, at the, um, time and it's a pretty big house, so, um, I want to say it's probably thirty, thirty-five feet tall at the tallest. Um, our addition does not extend beyond that, so, um, you also can't see it from, uh, West Lynn because there's a big bunch of trees there as well. Um, and, um, but we, we're not that concerned because we don't need a setback variance here. It's a corner lot, as you can see, it's a sixty-foot setback in the front and right now it's about a thirty-five, forty-foot, um, setback, eh, on the west side of the property. Um, so when we take that big, um, corner lot, uh, out of there for the setbacks, it doesn't leave us a lot of room to expand.
All right.
You, you said that the, um, existing rear setback of the garage is thirty feet? So you're asking for an additional two foot encroachment into the existing setback?
Correct. Um, we looked at the, what the side setback would be there if it wasn't a rear setback and it was, it's supposed to be twenty-seven feet, so we're well within that criteria.
All right.
Um, could you speak a little bit to, um, the, the size of the, um, addition in relation to the goals and the, the problem that it solves? So for example, is this, uh, the smallest possible, um, addition, could it, could a smaller one that didn't require a setback a, achieve the goal of creating a mudroom?
Um, well, right now we have in that mudroom addition, that's the, the part of the violation. We have, uh, part of a staircase, we have a powder room which presently resides in the kitchen right now, so when you're walking out of the powder room, you're right into the kitchen. Um, so we're trying to solve that, um, there's no laundry on the first floor. And the, um, that's also what we're trying to accommodate, as you can see down in the lower right-hand corner that, um, right now I'll have a small closet there, they'll probably need more space. Um, they have three children probably from four to ten, so they're gonna be growing and they're gonna need room. Because all kinds of stuff comes with, with younger children. Um, and that's pretty much the minimum we feel we could live with.
Thank you, and just one last question, has the homeowner spoken with neighbors and received any feedback?
I believe they spoke to one neighbor who was in favor of it, I don't know if they've spoken to the immediate one to the, uh, what is it, to the south. But they are quite a bit away, quite a bit. Probably fifty or sixty feet off of the rear property line to the south.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other board member questions for Jack?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, Jack, did, uh, you do have a livable floor area calculation for this?
Did I do a floor area calculation? No.
Yeah, you did not, okay, I, you know, just check that, because I think it's gonna be getting pretty close.
I will do that. Um, will we take care of that at the, um, when we go in for a building permit?
Well, you'll need to fill out the, uh, single-family, uh, zoning form, which will have that calculation on it. I just hope you don't have to come back and visit us again.
Yeah.
Me either.
All right. Okay, any other questions for Jack? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All righty, and then if, uh, is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then this public hearing is closed. All right, do we need a couple minutes, we finished the seven applications, or would you like to go forward? Everybody okay?
I'm ready to keep going, yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, Rick. So the first application to look at is one twenty-nine Ambassador. And that's the side setback and the increase in the livable floor area, so. Let's go around and see, Mr. Primo, what do you got to say?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it.
Okay.
I, I, you know, the, the size of lot and everything else, I don't think it's a, a problem.
Okay. How about you, Jen?
Yeah, I, I agree that the size of a lot can withstand this addition and it's already fitting in a pocket created kind of by the loop of that garage without really changing the property in a major way, so I'm, I'm in support.
All right, Jeannie?
I agree.
Okay, Judy?
I'm okay.
All right, Kathleen?
I am okay as well.
Andrea?
Agreed, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it also, okay, go ahead, then, that's.
I move to approve application three A dash O three dash twenty-one based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the requested variance of a twenty-five foot side setback is five feet short of the required thirty foot setback, which is not substantial on this two-hundred foot wide lot. Number two, the requested variance of seven thousand five hundred and sixty square feet of livable floor area exceeds code by one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four square feet. This addition is the minimum space necessary to achieve the goals of expanding the kitchen. For the requested square footage is substantial, the proposed addition has been carefully scaled in keeping with the significant size of the existing home and proportioned to fit comfortably on this large property. Number three, the addition will be a single story extending just a few feet beyond the existing garage with no impact to the existing driveway. It is designed with similar style and architectural elements to the rest of the house. Therefore, no unacceptable change in the character- Therefore, no unacceptable change in the character of the neighborhood and no substantial detriment to nearby properties is expected to result in the approval of this variance. Number four, the health, safety and welfare of the community will not be adversely affected by the approval of the variance request. Conditions, number one. This variance will apply only to the project as described in the application and testimony. In particular, it will not apply to projects considered in the future that are not in the present application. Number two, all necessary permits shall be obtained.
The second.
Okay, very good.
The motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz? Ms. Schwartz?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I didn't.
Yes, Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Motion to approve carries.
All right, very good. The next one is the CCR's the extension of their variance request for the maintenance building. Any issues with that? No?
No.
All right, I've got it. Okay, I move we approve application for A O one twenty-one based on the following findings of fact. One, the project was put on hold due logistic, due to logistic issues with the COVID situation. And two, no changes have been made to the project plans or drawings. Just one condition then, that the conditions made at the three, four, twenty approval shall be maintained.
Second.
I'm sorry, who got that second?
Remember right, me.
Thank you.
Andrea, yeah.
Thank you. The motion is to approve with conditions, Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
And Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay. The next one is West Henrietta Road for the sign change.
Well, it's Midland, thirty-six Midland.
Oh, I'm sorry. I went past it. Sorry. I put our X next to there. Sorry. Yeah. So we got thirty-six Midland. This is where we are looking at the side setback and the combination of the lots. So let's see. Ed, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for it. I went out, took a look at the site. You can see. Kind of these are unique parcels out there, the way they're kind of in there. I think at one time the. State highway was supposed to go through there, right, Rick?
I think so.
Yeah.
No, that's actual highways can go through there. Yeah.
Yes, that Northern Expressway.
Yeah, and the, it's actually the property is kind of surrounded on parts of it on three sides by Persimmons Park. You know, the, the house is where it is on the lot. We can't, there's no practical way to, to move it without destroying the value. They. They have a plan to stay there as they get older and kind of age in place. And. I think it's, it's a reasonable thing to do. It also decreases the number of buildable lots in the area, which I think is a beneficial thing.
All right, very good. How about Kathleen? What do you think?
It, it made sense to me, so I'm okay with it.
Okay, Judy?
I think it's fine. When I went out, Mr. Coffee was there and he really gave me a detailed, you know, explanation of it. And I think maintain, as Kathleen said, maintaining those lots the way it is or Ed, it's, it's wonderful. So, and you're really not going to see it until you almost walk beyond the house. So I think it's great.
All right. Very good. How about Jeannie?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's fine. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. How about Ms. Tompkins, right?
No issues. Although I did appreciate the explanation of why we need to issue a variance because I was a little confused at first when I was reading the application. So yeah, no issue here.
Okay, and Jen?
Yeah, it makes sense to me. No, no problems. My, actually, my only concern at all regards this application is the inability for the community members to unmute themselves and speak when they want to speak in a hearing. So it might be something we want to look at for future meetings to make sure people are not forced forcibly muted.
Okay, we can talk to our director.
Well, they have to be forcibly muted. They have to use the raise your hand aspect of, so we're, we're looking for the raise your hand.
It may not always be obvious, especially if you're on like a mobile device or something.
We should probably, well, we should, you're right.
Chat.
Probably make sure that people understand they use your hand. We really don't want to have people unable, you know, able to unmute themselves. It'd be like people shouting from the audience, which we don't want. So.
We can always mute them though if they are.
Yeah.
Well, I think maybe we can, Rick, we could just announce something at the beginning of the meeting of how they should run the red flag or whatever we would like them to do. Okay?
Yep.
But as for the application, no problems.
Okay. Do you have something?
I just want to explain that this app, this type of application we see often. And it really has to do when people are just combining, combining their lots. They're forced into the variance. I really don't think we need any conditions on this. I think it can just be a flat out approval. If they don't do the subdivision. Nothing, nothing changes. So. That would be my suggestion. I don't think there's any need for conditions on this application.
Well, so the only condition I was going to put, Rick, was that it's based upon what the. Location of the home where it is and what they submitted to us. And then just say that they would have to come back for any approvals respect to the addition and that we're not. Approving an addition because it's not part of the application.
Well, the addition, you couldn't put it, the addition would not go on that side of the house. I mean, if they were going to put an addition on that side of the house, they'd be coming back for variance. The addition is going to go to the, the south side of the house. Where they can do that, they could do that now if they wanted to without the subdivision. Because the lot, as you look at it right now. The eighty foot wide lot is what they have existing. So there's, there's a whole half a lot that's south of the house.
Right.
And then you have three additional forty foot lots. They just want to clean up those forty foot lots and they have to do some sewer work and stuff and they put this addition on. Again, nothing, nothing changes one way or the other. So I think. In these cases. Applying conditions really is. Not needed.
Okay, well, we'll give it a try and see if.
Yep.
When we're done, we think there's anything else we need to say.
I'm good as well. Go right ahead.
So I move we approve application for A dash O two dash twenty-one to allow a side yard setback of four point five feet based upon the following findings of fact. One, the requested variance is a minimum net variance necessary to address the benefits sought by the applicants. The variance from the requirements of a thirty foot setback to a four point five foot side yard is based on the existing placement of the home on the parcel when constructed in nineteen twenty-six. The need for the variance results from the applicant's wish to combine four commonly owned lots into one single family lot to allow in addition, which would allow the applicants to remain in their home. Second, no other alternatives can alleviate the difficulty and produce the desired result. The current house placement is a pre-existing condition and the only other option would be demolition of a substantial portion of the house to create a thirty foot side yard, which is not a practicable solution. Three, there will be no unacceptable changes in the character of the neighborhood and no substantial detriment to nearby properties is expected from approval of the variance. The variance merely allows the existing home built in nineteen twenty-six to remain in place and the, and the area will benefit. And, excuse me, and the variance will benefit the area by allowing four lots to be combined into one single family lot, thereby reducing the number of buildable lots and preserving the interface with Persimmon Park. Four, the hardship was not self-created by the applicant. Five, the health, safety and welfare of the community will not be adversely affected by approval of the variance. And I am not going to suggest any conditions.
Second.
Got the. Sorry, I got Jennifer for the second.
Sure.
Yeah.
The motion is to approve. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
And Mr. Primo?
Yeah.
Motion to approve carries.
Okay, the next one is West Henrietta Road for the sign change. Let's. Let's see here. Ed, what do you think about this?
Yeah, I mean, with. With the. Fact that you take, take off the other signage and just have a identification number, I, I really don't have any problem. Once again, it's. You know, busy commercial street and. Making it easy for people driving on the street to, to find the place seems to make sense to me.
Okay. Kathleen?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, Judy?
I just want to double check there at the max for the number of colors in the sign, right? Aren't you allowed up to three? Or does it's not apply anymore?
That really doesn't apply anymore.
Oh, okay. Okay. And, and if we can say in a condition, I think that if I can say the number should be black just underneath the, in the gable there. So. Or consider that as one.
Can we, can we control that if they're only before us for a building face sign?
Well, they said they were going to take the one out, the second part out and willing to put a number in. So.
I would just say I wouldn't want to control that.
Okay.
You know, they wanted to put yellow or orange numbers up there.
All right.
Does this go before any other board?
Goes in front of the architecture, architecture review board and the planning board. They have both seen it and approved it.
Okay.
I recall, I recall when we first approved the sign, we were almost all saying this is going to need to be bigger. So. Yeah. So as long as they remove the small one, I think that this scales perfectly on the busy road and I have no problem with it.
All right. Very good. Let's see. Jeannie?
Yeah, I think it's definitely better than before.
Okay, and Andrea?
Yeah, I, I would just, I think it is important to note that. This is smaller than what would be permitted under code if this were in a commercial zone too. I think that that's important to know in that approval.
All right. Okay. Yeah, I don't really have any issue with it either. I think we all kind of thought it was. Kind of inappropriate where it was put in that gable before. So I think it will definitely give better. Identification from the street. Okay, so Ms. Schmidt?
All righty, I'm going to have to wing part of it because I just put Andrea's addition in. All right, I move to approve application for A dash O three dash two on based on the following findings of fact. One, the request is to allow a sixty-two point eight square foot building sign in lieu of a maximum twelve point five square foot signage as conditioned by this board previously. Two, while the size increase is substantial. From the application and testimony provided, the new sign, which is scaled to the size of the building, will not create a change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties as the signage and entrance is on the side of the building. Three, in addition. The sign, the, I'm sorry, the square footage of sixty-two point eight square feet is smaller than what would be permitted if this was zoned commercial. Four, a larger sign also appears necessary as the restaurant is in a high traffic commercial road where cars generally travel at more than more forty miles per hour. So that a smaller sign originally contemplated above the door is not sufficient notice for users as to the building's use and location. Conditions, one, the variance will apply only to that which is described in the application and testimony provided. It will not apply to future projects.
Can we say, can we, instead of projects, can we say future signage?
Perfect. So not applied to future signage. Two, the current sign located in the peak will be removed when the new sign is put in place. Three, did you, did you say that they need to have other board approval?
They, they do have it already.
Okay, then I only need to.
I would like to put the condition in there that they do need a building permit for it.
Okay.
So all necessary building permits shall be obtained.
Okay. All right, do we have a second?
Judy's second.
Okay.
Motion is to approve with conditions, Mr. Primo?
Hi.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, the next one is the little air conditioner on the. Whatever you'd like to pick it side or rear yard, whatever you'd like to call it. Any issues by anybody? Okay, Judy, go ahead.
Okay. I move that we approve application for A O four dash twenty-one based on the following findings of fact. One, this property has no rear yard and therefore the air conditioner cannot be placed according to code. Two, there is only one side yard with a pre-existing wraparound deck that does not have a high enough clearance for the air condition, to be, air conditioner to be placed beneath it. Three, if the unit were placed next to the deck, it would be more conspicuous to nearby houses on the next street and too far from the house. Four, the house is setback quite a distance from the road and is the last house on a cul-de-sac. Thus, the air conditioner will really, will rarely be seen. Five, in addition, there is no garage on the property. So a car will be parked in front of the house most of the time, blocking the air conditioner even more from the street. Six, this proposed front yard location for the air conditioner unit is the only place on the property that is close enough to the house, provides enough access from the inside and clearance for the proper airflow to it. Condition one, this variance only applies to the front yard placement of an air conditioner, air conditioning unit as presented in testimony and written application to all necessary planning board and. Planning board and building approvals must be obtained.
Can we just say all necessary building permit shall be obtained?
Okay.
Yes. And I say, oh, you know, yes, permits. I'm sorry. I always say approvals. Okay. Yes.
All right. You said planning board duty.
Yes, and you aren't building, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Second?
I can second.
Okay, done.
The motion is to approve with conditions, Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yeah.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
And Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
All righty. Moving right along, forty-five Noel Top with the two-story addition. Any concerns about this?
I'm good.
Seems pretty, seems pretty straightforward. Yeah. Okay, Andrea?
I move to approve application O four dash O five dash twenty-one, et cetera. All is described on application and plans on file based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the granting of the requested front yard variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The extension into the front yard setback is minor and will appear in line with several other homes with garages connected. That extend into the front yard setback. Number two, the requested variance is not substantial, given that the increase represents only ten percent of the code specified. Number two, the requested variance is not substantial, given that the increase represents only ten percent of the code-specified minimum and the front steps of the home already extend the same distance into the front yard. Number three, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any other method or without a variance. Given the current home layout and location of entry ways as well as the drainage swale in the real yard, in order to satisfy the needs of the applicant and permit construction of a garage appropriately sized for modern vehicles, a variance is required to extend the addition into the front yard. Number four, there is no evidence that the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Conditions, number one, the variance granted herein applies only to the addition described in and in the location as depicted on the application and in testimony given. And number two, all necessary permits and architectural review board approvals must be obtained.
And my second?
Second, Judy.
Judy, thank you.
Motion is to approve with correct conditions. Uh, Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. Dale.
Yes.
Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
All right, and our final one is Westland Avenue. Now, Rick, the, the issue with the livable floor area, would it be applicable to a condition if we were to approve this, that it does not meet it, or how would you want to handle that?
It's a good question, um. I mean, they have to, they have to prove that they're not going to go above the livable floor area and they make the building permit.
Right.
Um, I don't know if you want to.
It's not a condition of the setback.
It's not a condition of the setback, but.
They would just need to come back to us.
But they, could they build what they want to build, because if they had to cut back to meet the livable floor area, they would, might not need the setback variance.
Right.
Um, that's a good question, uh, but not knowing that they need a little floor area variance, I don't know if there's much we can really do about it.
That would ju- it would just bomb the thing if he does the calculation then.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only, the other, obviously, the only other alternative is to make him do it, but he doesn't really need to do it for the setback variance though.
Right, exactly.
Because we could table it otherwise, but it might be helping him logistically, but it really is a requirement.
He can't pull the permit if we table it, right?
Can't pull the permit if we table it.
And he can't get the permit if he needs the little.
And he can't get the permit.
So he might as well grant this and then he comes back a second time if he needs to.
Yeah, I, I don't think, you know, i- it's not a huge variance, so I don't think granting this one, you know, is going to kind of handcuff us if he does need the livable floor area variance.
Yep. Okay, well, as long as logistically, if they can, because, you know, like I say, I just, I, I don't know, I didn't think we could really request him as additional information to do as it relates to the setback variance, uh.
Right.
Okay, all right, very good. Now, does anyone other than this concern have any concerns about this?
I have, um, the homeowner sent me a message on chat, is that something I can submit still? He just left, he just had a comment that he wasn't able to get in.
Now, a public hearing is closed, so, well.
Yeah.
Now, the public hearing is closed, I agree.
Right, yes.
All right.
I'm, I'm concerned that he wasn't able to speak.
Yeah, he tried to, he tried to, but he wasn't able to get in for the, it was closed.
And this is a, this is a, a neighbor to the applicant? You said this, this is the homeowner. He had his architect speaking.
Right. Right.
Well, I don't think we need to hear from the homeowner, probably. Since it sounds like this, just go and go for approval.
Well, we should, I, I mean, just to pick up on Jen's point, we need to look into how.
Yes, agreed.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that we announce how we want people to announce themselves if they're trying to speak in the public hearing portion of any one of the applications.
I just think it's more appropriate for us administratively to mute people who are problems rather than require people who are not problems to jump through hoops.
Okay.
But that's a separate business item.
Yeah, we'll take that offline, right, but that's, that's one way of doing it, yes. Okay, all right, so is there any other concerns about, um, the twenty-two Westland?
Uh, obviously, the public hearing is closed, so I'm not asking to put into the record what the homeowner would say, what attempted to say. But I, I, if it affects what we approve or how we approve it, I would consider that we should table it and allow that homeowner to, to speak again, even, even if we're going to approve it today. It does seem really odd to have a public co- an attempt at a public comment out there that, that didn't get through.
Um.
Is, is, is the homeowner still on the, on the Zoom call? Because if they are, we could simply ask them what they wanted to go forward if the comment was important enough.
He is still on, yes.
Yes, he is.
Um, so in order to facilitate that comment, you would have to.
Reopen the public hearing.
Correct, vote to reopen the public.
Correct.
But I'm, I'm just wondering if the person.
Certainly do that, i- I mean, that would be, since he's still on this call.
Yeah.
Be fairly.
And that's really the only way we could do it, really, is we'd have to get right.
All right, so why, why don't we do it?
I have no problem with it. Does anyone have a problem with it?
No.
Okay.
I know that we reopen the public hearing.
Okay, for four A O six twenty-one.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Second, do we have a second?
I second, Andrea Wright.
All those in favors, aye? Opposed?
Okay, no opposed, no opposed. Yes, okay, so can Jeff get this gentleman on board here?
Yep, you can just ask him to. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone, uh, this is Jacob Wall, I'm the owner of Twenty-two Westland. I, uh, beg all of your forgiveness. I merely, uh, wanted to uh, express my, uh, support for the idea of, uh, of providing some instructions, because I did try to raise my hand and just couldn't get to that button in time uh, on my, on my computer here, but, uh, the idea that I, uh, spoke with the, with the adjoining neighbor, it was one that I just wanted to support because my architect, uh, didn't have firsthand evidence. I, I did speak with my only neighbor that would be impacted by this project. He had absolutely no objection to it. The other neighbor, uh, on the other side of the house, uh, I have, every day I've come home from work, I've tried to flag him down and just couldn't. Um, but the notice is, is, you know, actually facing his house practically and, uh, there hasn't been any mention of any issues. I'm sorry for the trouble that this has all caused.
Uh, no, that's all right. No, you certainly, we want to hear your comments and you certainly have a right to speak, so I appreciate that you took the time to keep going here, so thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
All right, no problem. Okay, so is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this application? And if there's none, and there is none, then the public hearing is closed. Okay, thank you. All right, so let's go back to this. Is there any open concerns about Twenty-two Westland? All right, Ms. Watson.
I move to approve application for A dash O six dash twenty-one based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the rear setback of the existing garage is thirty feet. The requested variance is not substantial as it decreases that setback, setback by just two more feet to twenty-eight feet. The majority of the new addition meets code with just a small corner of the proposed addition encroaching on required forty-foot setback. Number two, the location of the proposed addition is dictated by the existing location of the garage and kitchen. No alternative location exists that would be both practical and not require a variance. Number three, this addition is the minimum space necessary to achieve the goals of creating a mudroom, powder room, and laundry room. Number four, no unacceptable change in the character of the neighborhood and no substantial detriment to nearby, to nearby properties is expected to result in the approval of this variance. The addition will extend just a few feet beyond the existing garage with no impact to the existing driveway, drainage patterns, or other physical properties in the neighborhood. It is designed with similar style and architectural elements to the rest of the house and existing landscaping will screen the addition from, strike the last part. Um, it is designed with similar style and architectural, architectural elements to the rest of the house and will not be seen from the street. Number five, the health, safety, and welfare of the community will not be adversely affected by the approval of this variance request. Conditions, number one, this variance will apply only to the project as described in the application and testimony. In particular, it will not apply to projects considered in the future that are not in the present application. Number two, all necessary permits shall be obtained.
Second, Judy.
Motion is to approve with conditions, Ms. Dale.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
All right, very good. Well, thank you very much. Now, does anybody have any issues for the May meeting as far as attendance? Everybody good, or does anyone? All right, very, very good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, take care.
Bye.